Okay, we're gonna start out with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first order of business on the agenda tonight is the election of a chairperson. The annual meeting, the chairman of the meeting is on the floor.
Nominate Dean Battleton.
I'll second Dean, the elected chairperson of the annual meeting.
Any more nominations? All the members that say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all at the same time. The motion's carried. Stacy, you need to sign in. And there's agendas up there also. Okay, we are going to call the budget hearing to order.
All right, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming this evening. And I'm truly excited you are here. Merton is doing some really great things for the school district, for our students. And we have facility projects. And I'm just really excited to share some of the detail in what went into this budget. So I did hand out, first off, this budget publication. So this is what went into the newspapers to announce this meeting. And sometimes it's nice to take a look at this because it gives a little bit of a history on what has been happening the last two years and our trend to where we're going. So the numbers under the budget side, we're gonna be digging deeper into and going into the details throughout this budget hearing tonight. So I just wanted to go through some of our points on the agenda. We're gonna talk a little bit about our guiding principles, some of our upcoming budget development dates that are very important. We're gonna talk a little bit about, I'm gonna give you update on the governor's budget proposal. We're gonna talk some about the budget assumptions that is going into this budget. We're gonna discuss a little bit of the fund balance, what happened last year and where we're gonna go this year. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our membership and revenue limit. Those two numbers really go hand in hand a lot and it's a very important piece of our budget. From there, I'm gonna go into the decreasing state aid we've been receiving along with our proposed 17, 18 budget expenditures. I'm gonna do an expense summary so you can see where all of that is going along with the revenue summary. And then I'm gonna talk about Fund 73, which is our HOPE fund. And then the big question everybody's here for this evening is our proposed tax levy and our mill rate and some of the comparisons with the surrounding districts. So I always like to start off with what formulated this budget. And really, the whole goal was to align our financial resources with Merton Community School District's mission and vision. So the mission here is to provide an educational environment that develops a lifelong love of learning for our students. And how are we gonna achieve that through the development of educational opportunities, academically and artistically challenging curriculum, and then a safe and comfortable So these are the dates that are coming up in the near future that really impact the final numbers for our budget. We're right now doing our annual meeting and budget hearing. And then September 15th, this Friday, is our membership count. And that is really an important date because that gives us our number of resident students and that directly affects our revenue limits. Then coming up October 1st, the Department of Revenue is gonna certify our tax proportionate values. And from that, it'll provide the property value per municipality and that'll directly affect our mill rates. So right now I have an estimate in there and we'll get it certified for sure. And then also on October 15th, we're gonna get our, from the DPI, our general aid certification, another huge piece of our budget. So basically, those three dates are gonna have various factors on this budget and it could change slightly, but we have a really good budget in place. And then our Board of Education here will certify our final tax levy at our board meeting on October 23rd. So, update, this is really recent, hot off the press. The Joint Finance Committee just on August 29th, they approved these two pieces into their budget. And that was to provide all the districts with an increase of $200 per pupil in Categorical Aid. So what does that mean for us? That's about $160,000 in new revenue. And then they also increased the open enrollment transfer by $100 per student. Luckily, Merton Community School District, we have more students coming in than leaving, so that gives us an increase in revenue of about $10,000. So going forward, this is gonna go to lawmakers in the Assembly and they're gonna vote on this tomorrow. And they expect it'll pass shortly afterwards, it'll go to the Senate. And then it's expected to be signed into law by the end of September by Governor Walker. All right, some of our budget assumptions in this budget. We started out with a 1.77% increase for all of our teachers and a 1.5% increase for our salaries, for our administrators and our support staff. We also, we were facing a 9.9% actual increase in health premiums. And so we increased to a high deductible plan. We brought that down to 5.45% increase. And the new deductible is $1,000 per single, $3,000 per family. And then we added an HRA to help with some of offsetting of those costs for our employees. We do have declining enrollment, which you've heard about for a while, and I'll have another slide on that a little bit later. This I'm estimating a 3.8% increase in property values. Those came out in August, but those are gonna be what's certified in October by the Department of Revenue. We have our very last payment, yay, that's gonna be made in April of 2018. And then our long-term debt disappears. We're gonna continue adding $200,000 into Fund 41. And those are for facility projects we're kind of saving up for in the future. We changed food service companies, which I'm sure many of you know about. We did change from Avions over to Chartwells. And so we're budgeting in this one that it's gonna be a self-sustaining program or maybe even generate a little bit of income for hoping. We did add a new camp invention program, and that specifically to increase membership for our summer school. And it also was a significant decrease in cost of families, so it was a win-win for our district. We're adding a new social studies curriculum this year. And we're adding Chromebooks, great purchase for the primary students, for students and staff. So that's in there this year. And we have budgeted to spend over $600,000 on facility projects. So this is a list of the majority of them. We have our primary sound system, primary library project with the PTO, they're helping us with that one. We're building envelope, we're putting furniture in for the sixth and eighth grades, LED, that's the lights in the intermediate school. Phone system upgrade throughout the whole district, we've already completed. We are doing a new HVAC system for the intermediate school. We have new lockers with plastic bottoms at the intermediate school and some ceiling grid tiles. So fund balance, yes?
So with the switch to Chartwell...
Yes.
We thought in the last year's budget that we were gonna have self, or two years ago when we signed the other group company, that we were there, we're gonna be self-sustaining.
For options.
Yes. What makes you think that this new Chartwell is going to be self-sustaining? What things did you look at to say, hmm, okay, if these five things or these three items here are gonna make them self-sustaining, we're pretty darn sure?
Well, in the first year, they did provide us a guarantee. So right there, the guarantee that we are going to be making, or at least sustaining the program. Other areas that we looked at, we looked at a lot of their marketing and how they were gonna increase participation, because participation has been a big flow. And we really wanted to up that. We had three people come in, or two, sorry, three, people come in and we went through interviews along with members of the finance committee. And we talked to them, we had them explain the entire program that they would be able to bring to Merton, some of their signage costs, new ideas they had on changing the flow of the student traffic. So there was a lot of, a lot of ideas. And important was really the quality of food, are the students gonna like this as a something they're gonna enjoy?
Yeah. The other piece, Joel, what we did was is, two years ago when we switched to Avions, we felt strongly that we could do a food service program on our own. Prior to that, we were with Topper. And at that moment, we were Sherry, we had a partnership with Richmond School District and Merton. So three years ago, we decided, hey, we can do this on our own. That proved not to be efficient for us. So throughout the, the project with Sherry and the finance committee's recommendation was we have entered into a partnership, a shared food service director with Hartland Lakeside. So that alone will share the cost of the leadership. That's number one, that we really feel strongly from the personnel. So we have cut our personnel costs significantly. The other component there is we have entered into the National Food Lunch Program. So what the National Food Lunch Program is, is for every meal we sell, we get a reimbursable rate of approximately 35 cents for every meal we sell. Whereas in the past, we were not on the program, so there was no reimbursement coming back in from that standpoint. For our students who are on free reduced lunch, we get a greater reimbursement rate, so we almost get the whole thing back from that standpoint too as well. So when we take a look at, A, what we thought would be a great marketing campaign to increase participation, which is always the number one thing, we need to sell more school lunches, we feel that Chartwells is going to achieve that greater percentage, we feel very, very strongly. In conjunction with the shared partnership, Hartland Lakeside, sharing the leadership costs and cutting down on that personnel expenses, in addition to also bringing in revenue from the National Food Lunch Program. So those really three key factors, we feel very, very strongly that we wanna continue to build our Fund 50 to make sure it's not only sustaining, but we're developing and creating a high use of fund balance there, so we don't need to continually tap into Fund 10 expenditures. Because ultimately, that pulls away from what we do, and you see that on your, on your sheet, is Fund 10 is what we can use for everything. Fund 50 is only for our food service. So if we do have to make upgrades, we would take it out of our Fund 50. So that is a strong priority of the board and we'll be working closely and that's, Sherry's working closely. Early on, our numbers, especially at the intermediate school, are up, which is great. It's great to me, great excitement. Next door, we're right around where we were last year, now it ticked a little higher, but we feel with the shared costs, reimbursable meals, we're gonna be in great, great shape in Fund 50. And the guarantee of approximately $16,000 this first year.
In year two, is there any guarantee in year two or three or?
No. No, year two or year three, no.
Nobody offered.
Nobody offered a guarantee for that. And these are one-year contracts that continue to roll forward. So, so we do have the, the opportunity to continue moving forward. So we, we take this year to be a learning year and we look forward to many self-sustaining years in the past. Hartland Lakeside did find themselves self-sustaining and adding fund balance every year to Fund 50 using Chartwells. Chartwells also is in Arrowhead as well. Their, their group is basically part of the largest hospitality group in the world. Chartwells is their school lunch program, their K-12 school lunch program. So they've got a lot of resources, hopefully will boost participation and bring in some revenue.
They have a lot of experience.
They've got some experience, yeah.
And the food service director, he's been at Hartland Lakeside for quite a few years now. So we're bringing in somebody who has a proven career over there and hopefully can duplicate it here.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Okay, fund balance update. So actually, Merton, we've increased our fund balance over the past five years. I just want to explain a little bit what is fund balance. It is not the cash balance, it's not the liquid amount of money that you have on hand. It is truly the difference between your assets and your liabilities. So it's gonna include some of your accounts receivable in there, your accounts payable, and then also any other investments you may have. So auditors, they recommend to have about 28 to 30% of a fund balance. And they feel that's very important because that affects your bond rating. If you go out for any short-term or long-term debt, that's what the companies look at. They look at your bond rating and then that's what your interest rates are based off of. So it's important to have that. For right in 1617, we actually increased our fund balance and went to about 32%. So that's why in this budget, we have a little bit heavier one-time facility projects that we're gonna spend down a little bit of that and bring it back into the 30% area.
Right, and just so we know, our, our board policy is approximately 20%. So we will be working with the finance team in conjunction with the facility team, in conjunction with the strategic planning committee to relook at our 10-year facility plan and see which projects would be next on the list and if in fact you wanted to use some of those fund balance dollars to, to, for one-time purchases.
Yep.
And also forecast moving forward in the future with declining enrollment. We know what the budget is for next year on a per-pupil basis, but we're not quite sure for the 19 to 21 by annual as well. So more conversation at the board level will be happening regarding our fund balance.
Okay, membership and the revenue limit. As I said, these two things really tie in heavily together. We are estimated this year our headcount to be 845. And then that equates to a full-time equivalency of 779. I wanted to point out that our headcount did peak at 1,058 and since then, since 2009-10, it has been declining ever since. Overall this year, it's, we're projecting a 15 student loss in headcount, so that's what it is for this year. And it's just really important to understand how the membership FTE is calculated, because that drives your revenue. So that little graph there makes it kind of easy to follow. You start with your headcount number on the third Friday count. You subtract out anybody who's open enrolling into our district from other places. And then we add anybody from our district, open enrolling out to other districts, and that provides our resident student count. That's the number you're going for. You multiply it by the proration, which is gonna be your summer school students and some of your 4K program, and then that generates an FTE. That's how it's calculated by the DPI. So based on the, the FTE of the 779, the maximum revenue that we can bring in with some exceptions for declining enrollment is 7.8 million, a little bit over that. So that is the maximum on our revenue limit worksheet and that was put together in 1994. And that is the absolute max that we can go to asking for taxpayers and state funding. We have decreasing state aid here at Merton. So equalization aid is a formula and it's meant to distribute our state tax dollars so that students across the state are funded roughly at the same per member amount. And there is the inverse relationship between our equalization aid and our property values. So Merton, we have a high per pupil property valuation. Property around here is more expensive than across the state average. So that means that our equalization aid is gonna be less than we receive from the state. So our estimated aid from DPI as of July 1st is a little over 3.4 million dollars. This is another number that can change on October 15th when they provide us our final aid estimate. So basically, if I take our revenue limit amount, that was a little over the 7.8 million, and I take out our aid of the 3.4 million, it leaves approximately 7.7, or 7.4 million, that's gonna be paid by our, our local taxpayers this year. And you can see over the years, our aid has been decreasing as our property values have So these are our proposed budget expenditures. And these are basically, you can go down the sheets of paper I gave you, but it's just summarizing for Fund 10, we're looking to spend a little over 9.5 million. Special education, we need to fund a little over 9.2 million. We do have our last debt service payment, which is $484,000. Looking at probably our food service, we'll be spending about $272,000. However, we should be receiving enough to make up the difference on that one. And then in our employee benefit trust fund, HOPE fund 73, looking at spending about $10,660. So diving a little bit more into these numbers. So that 9.5 million in excess of that of expenditures, this is how it's broken down on the graph. And you see the salary benefits there, that actually totals, I wrote it down, so I wouldn't have to do this in my head, 62.3%. And that is very typical with the school district because we are a service industry. Then we also have in here our purchased services. That's a larger amount. And that's gonna include our projects such as the painting, anything we are paying somebody else to provide for us. The HVAC system, phone system upgrades, snow removal, travel expenses, things of those sorts. We have utilities in there, about $180,000 this year. Our open enrollment number, that is the students going out of our district, about 4.8%. Our general supplies, those would be things such as classroom supplies, books, our new curriculum, computer software programs that the students use for learning. Our non-capital equipment, those would be things that are of small individual costs such as a trailer, some doors, pieces of furniture, items such as that. Our district insurance has actually gone down this year. We did do the full appraisal here on the entire district and they found some expenses we didn't need to be paying for. So that actually did go down this year. It was a great savings to do the appraisal this year. Fund 27 transfer, that's a larger amount of our budget, that's to cover special ed programs that are going here. And lastly, you can't even really see it, but there's a dues and fees column that goes up the middle there, and that's for membership fees, bank fees, very small, small dollar costs.
Over the last few years, we've done a fair amount to pull in building energy efficiency and changing the gas supplier.
Gas procurement. Yep, so the utilities took a down.
Have we tracked that and been able to like analyze, you know, oh, our electricity bill is, is much lower than it used to be and we're triggering that to the LED lighting or the whatever? Have we done some back analysis on that or just observed that it's gone down and it's okay?
Yeah, the debt payment funding was done for the gas, so that would be a lot of the heating, right?
Right. We're being, like this past year with our, Thursday, we're meeting with our gas procurement company, so we'll be taking a look at that gas usage and things like that, but it has significantly gone down. With the electric, it's, it's so dependent on the weather, it's very difficult to, to really track in apples to apples, is it the LEDs, is it our automation, is it this, is it that?
Sure.
But we can see over the past several years, the expenses in our utilities continuing to decline significantly compared to where it was before. We didn't have control of our automation. And now like this year, we've switched out to a tremendous amount of LEDs, but also D-lamps as well. So...
Which is gonna help you as much as it used to.
Yes and no, but it's, it's still...
With the LEDs, we're gonna be...
Right, well, instead of three, we went on to two. And even, we've even taken three lamps, but we've also, for instance, in some of our classrooms where we did some of the ceiling grids, we've taken a third of the lights out. So that...
So this next year should hopefully continue.
So outside of just watching the line decrease, that's where we've been, we've been able to, when we start talking about where we can look for budget savings, we obviously can look into savings for our utility bills and things like that. Definitely a benefit helping.
Our teachers on call, is that a purchase service?
Yes, that is.
Is that going into the salary?
It's a purchase service.
Purchase service.
Correct. All right, revenue side of it. So as you can see, our revenue is coming in a little bit under what my projected expenses are because we're gonna use some of that fund balance this year. And as you can tell, tax levy, because as I explained, taxpayers are paying more this year, we're getting a little bit closer to that 50% mark. Our aid is at the 36.5%, and that is our general aid for the state. We also have open enrollment, so that is students who are coming into our district and we're getting paid to have them come in here. It's a nice amount. We also receive some state revenue, so that is gonna be the categorical aid that I talked about prior, some food service aid, items of that nature, our federal revenues. Oh, it must be on the purple in there because we don't get a lot, we just get title, yeah. We have a couple title grants, we have title 1, 2, 3, and a new one this year, number four. So, but the small amounts, like $55,000, that's not very much. And then the other category, that's where our student fees are contained, interest on investments. We also have our summer school program, Swallow, and that's where we receive income from them participating with us. So this is just a quick overview of our Fund 73, which is our post employment benefits. So these are for teachers that have retired. And as you can see, we've continued to draw down on this. We've been able to do that as teachers have gone off of our insurance over the years. The last one actually just finished up in June of this past year on our actual insurance. It also includes some of our HRA payments. So we still do have some teachers on the plan, but it keeps to significantly dwindled down as we're going along and eventually, you know, these days don't.
Do we no longer have any post-retirement obligations amongst our teaching staff? There is one other individual who we do have a contractual obligation for post-employment benefits, that's it.
So, getting small, small. This is proposed tax levy, so you can see exactly what we're looking at. Fund 10 is the tax levy that I talked about previously. Fund 39 is our last debt payment. And Fund 41 is kind of like our savings account, we keep putting $200,000 into to save up every year. Basically, it comes down to our mill rate is going down to 5.62. And you can see it's been decreasing over the last couple of years. Basically, what does that mean? A $300,000 home is approximately 100, or 1,000, sorry, $1,686 in taxes for 17, 18. And we did share amongst some of the schools an email and compared what our tax rates are amongst each other. And so I just included it on here so you could see Merton is really a great team.
And next year, with our debt falling off...
It'll go down though.
It'll go down significantly.
More because that Fund 39 will be gone.
Right, significantly.
Mm-hmm. So that is the presentation. Any other questions? Yes?
You know what's going on in Madison? They've been talking about rewarding the districts that have been visibly responsible. Have you been following that at all?
How are they rewarding? What are you...
I'm not exactly sure, I just caught, I just read it briefly in the paper, but I wasn't sure if that was going to apply this year in the budget or maybe for next year.
That, you mind? I thought that...
Yeah, go ahead.
That's, that's kind of lost a little bit of steam. Basically, in the state of Wisconsin, there is a low point in which you can only spend per pupil, there's a, there's a, there's a floor to it. There is no ceiling. But back in 1994, when the school district of Merton decided to, hey, we are gonna be a low-spending district. They were talking about is, is raising some of that, that minimum level up and that if they raised it $200, we actually then would have raised with it, which means we would have gotten more state aid. So that's when we talked about the reward. I haven't seen that type of verbiage or that type of language moving forward. I think there was a lot of compromise, that was something that was real early. But with all the massaging and the new plan, they've taken that, that floor and left it there. They did not raise the floor at all. So that's where you hear about, we would have been a winner in that scenario because we are, well, we are the lowest per pupil spending in Longhurst County this year with our, with our proposed per pupils expenditures. So, and our achievement data, we were top five and this year, who knows what we'll be when it comes out at the forward because our scores are really, really good. And we'll see where we are, but we are great value in, in Longhurst County and across the state. Yes, very, very low-spending, very, very high performing.
I did hear some things about the special ed per pupil, open enrollment numbers. And on those, it's not gonna affect this year though, they're saying it would be need to, need to, if that does go through, so...
They continue to tweak that to see if, to allow students with special needs an opportunity for open enrollment, because right now, the way the funding and the way the system works, it is, we set zero.
It's a cap.
It's cap.
Any other questions?
Okay. So with our... Are we doing the budget for the...
We'll need a...
In the hearing?
We will need a motion, I think. Right, Stephanie, we'll need a motion to adopt the proposed... Right, Stephanie, we'll need a motion to adopt the proposed expenditures. Because we need to make a motion to, we had the financial report, then we got the hearing on the budget, which was the same thing. Now we need to probably adopt proposed expenditures before we call the annual meeting order?
I always thought we just did the hearing and then we did the budget and the...
Oh, the levy, then you, we, we don't need to make a motion for the funds?
Correct. There's just a calling of it.
There was just a calling of it, oh, okay. Okay, yeah, then we're, we called meeting door?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Right. Did you do that earlier?
No, I did the budget here.
Budget.
Budget here. So now we've concluded the budget here, now we're calling the annual meeting order. And now we have the annual meetings for twenty sixteen minutes.
I'll make a motion to dispense the reading of the annual minutes of Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty sixteen at seven thirty p.m. I'll second.
Here, a motion, a second, a third discussion. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. And this is for the, everybody, everybody votes on these things with us? Okay, then we have District Committee of Traders report.
So we're going to go back to the audience. We're going to go back there. So, a lot of steps to do. Not in this scenario.
I agree, I agree.
There we go. So, well, again, welcome to Sherry. First of all, thank you very much for the budget presentation. Sherry is new to our team, has been here six months? Eight months now, but time is flying. But certainly, you just heard the budget hearing and I can tell you that the finances of our school district have never been stronger. And you hear an awful lot about school funding and you will not hear the Merton Community School District complaining about our, our situation. I think the board has done a tremendous job of setting themselves up for financial success and we really truly have set our priorities for students first. And that means whether it's curriculum, instruction, facilities, support staff, it's, it's been greatly, greatly appreciated, certainly has. So, so tonight, we'd love to talk about our district's focus and obviously, we are here about student achievement, but the other main areas that we talked about is obviously we've got facilities, we've got finances that we continue to work on, and then ultimately, we talked about that workforce development and engagement. How do we make our people better? And that truly is what we are trying to do. Talk about our priorities and Sherry gave us a little bit of a preview on some of those already. And then ultimately, talk about some of the challenges that we are facing and some of the ways that we are beginning to overcome them. We'll talk about declining enrollment and some of those opportunities that we have moving forward as well. So, when we take a look at what we, what we measure across our year is, is we do have several standardized approaches to take a look at how our students are doing globally. Those are the ones that are kind of the most common, but ultimately, the most public as we take a look at those. We think of some common ones like MAP, our Measure of Academic Progress, where this past year, we saw significant gains, ten percent, where we have found now basically on average, sixty-three percent of our kids around, across the district have met their MAP goal in both reading and mathematics. That is very impressive when you think of the national average is fifty, but the research on their MAP would say is, is the higher achieving school district, the more difficult it is to meet your goal. This year, we saw a huge spike where seventy-five to eighty percent of our kids are now benchmarking at a twenty-four ACT or better in the area of mathematics and literacy. That is the average. And we have eighty, seventy-five to eighty percent of our students above that benchmark. We benchmark that according to MAP because when we go to Arrowhead, the average ACT there, the typical ACT is twenty-four compared to the state average of right around twenty. So we use many multiple benchmarks as it relates to MAP, not only on growth, but also taking a look at the achievement of our kids in comparison to their peers around the country and around the area. For literacy, we have Fontis and Penel, F and P, and that shows that between seventy-five again and eighty percent of our kids are benchmarking at or above where we want them to be in the area of reading. And that includes fluency, accuracy, comprehension, meaning, inferring, very deep conversations as we take a look at measuring that. Early literacy screeners, when we take a look at our 5K through second grade, we are required by state law to have early literacy screeners. We use our MAP, we use some PALS, we use a little bit of this and a little bit of that, but we measure that early fluency to really make sure that our kids are being successful readers right from the get-go. Formative and summative assessment, we are constantly, obviously, some would say too much assessment, but again, we are measuring the progress and what we are really looking at, two things. One is, is growth. We want to see growth. That, that is super important to our staff. But ultimately, there's a combination of growth and achievement, as in how that, how high are our kids achieving? The State Forward Exam, I'm not allowed to talk about how that's, how that went, but I'm very, very excited and we're very pleased to see how we did compared to where we did last year. We did see tremendous growth in all of the areas of the forward. I can't get into that detail until probably later this fall when those results become embargoed. And then ultimately, what we have done is, is we do spend a tremendous amount of time looking at individual needs of kids. We use technology to do this, to personalize, but we also use our staff to really take a look at and dive into a lot of those data points to see what kids need now. And small group instruction, personalized instruction, in particular, in the area of literacy, reading and writing, and mathematics. Those are the areas that we really drill deep down and do a lot of differentiation at the personal level. So, some other engagement and achievement things that we like to try. If you take a look at our non, not the literacy and the numeracy stuff, but our science program. Our science program has a heavy STEM emphasis. We are a complete project lead-the-way school, 5K through eighth grade, which then leads into Arrowhead High School and their high school level programming. So again, it is streamlined, 5K through eighth grade, that was our big adoption a year ago. We've got a tremendous amount of technology in our kids' hands, but ultimately, looking at being very purposeful with STEM. It is not something that we just kind of skirt around or it's an elective. It is built into our core science program on a daily basis in regardless of whether it's life, physical, or earth sciences. Technology, the board, like Sherry said, was gracious enough to allow our 5K through second graders to now have a new, brand-new Chromebook at a ratio of one Chromebook to two students. If you walk around our school, you see those being used, but you also see classrooms sharing those already to become one-to-one, to be able to really differentiate, intervene, whole small groups while we're getting kids what they need at that personalized level by using technology. For literacy, we use MobiMax, we use RASKIDS, again, very personalized. For mathematics, at the primary school, we use Draybox. And at the intermediate school, we use Tenmarks. Little example, you'll walk around during Tenmarks time, in particular, a lot of our kids, it extends them way past our curriculum. Walk into a geometry class, all of a sudden, they're talking about algebra two trig stuff. That's why we really feel strongly that we're able to really reach a lot of those math goals in the area of mathematics. The literacy stuff too, we don't wait for a whole group, we are not a whole group instructional model in literacy. We truly are that individualized curriculum to making sure that we can do that. We do use technology to assist us with that. Another big emphasis is class size. The board has given us the resources and the authority to really make sure that those class sizes are very, very small, in particular, the area of literacy and numeracy. Open enrollment, when you talk about probably one of the, the things that, that I would say that our staff should be most proud about is the amount of kids that we don't lose. Last year, this past year, we have probably about seven hundred and sixty residents or maybe seven hundred residents who can choose anywhere they want to go in the area. We lost one. One student out of all of them who could have come back last year, we lost one to another school district. That's really, really high engagement rate with our families, but ultimately, the retention of our kids is very, very high. Then you take a look at who we're attracting into our schools, open enrollment, we are attracting a lot of kids from a lot of other different schools because of the work that our community has allowed us to do and, and move forward with. All right. So when we do take a look at engagement, and I say, show this same slide every year because there's four key questions that we want to answer all the time in everything we do, cores and noncores. One is, is what do we want kids to learn? What do we want them to learn right now? You heard Sherry talk about, we're going to be in the midst of a mathematics adoption. This past year, we really worked, looked at our essential outcomes, our essential learning targets for social studies, identify what it is we want them to learn. Secondly, is we've got to know what it is that, how do we know they learned it? Right? What kind of common assessments and what kind of formative, summative assessments are we really going to use to measure whether our kids got it? The third key question is, is what are we going to do if they don't get it? Okay? We've talked a lot about the intervention component, we've talked a lot about small group personalized, using support resources as coaches, interventionists, to assist our kids who don't quite get it yet. Our fourth key question though is, what do we do once they get it? Again, continuing to extend, meet the gamut of the learner from A to Z. That is our, that is our objectives. In every curriculum adoption, ask those four key questions. What do we want them to know? How are we going to know that they know it? What are we going to do if they don't? What are we going to do if they do? Those are four key driving questions to all of our curriculum adoptions. Now, facilities, you heard a little bit from, from Sherry. One of the things that, I, I mean, as a superintendent, very proud, and I think as our community, is, is we have been able to achieve our facility needs without going to referendum, without going to referendum. Very critical that you plan accordingly, you partner with the appropriate partnerships like PTO, where we've done hundreds of thousands of partnerships with them, as recently as the primary school library, the Gaga pit. In the past, it's been playgrounds, gymnasiums, libraries. All of these things in conjunction with the work that our community is doing and our school board are making our facilities just wonderful. As we take a look at what we've done, you know, our classroom environments, again, putting our money into our students, we just got done revamping an entire sixth and seventh and eighth grade hallway. Why didn't we start with them? Well, we know that's where engagement starts to fall off. Peaks at fifth grade and starts to fall off. The school board did a tremendous, we had the facility team travel to a different school district to see what it is, what they do, how do we get some unique furniture? So we are piloting some unique learning spaces this year. Our kids are loving it. I've got other teachers saying, when is it our turn? We'll be getting to that in a little bit, I guess. But really taking a look at how do we enhance our educational environments? Facilities matter. We are taking great care of them and we are doing it within our revenue limit, not exceeding it, not using Act Thirty-Two with energy efficiencies. Phil asked a question about, boy, are we seeing these energy efficiency projects pay off? We are, and we're doing it under the revenue limit without having to go and use Act Thirty-Two, which is exceeding the revenue limit for energy-saving projects. So, a ton of things that we're doing across our facility and you guys can see that there too. Another thing you'll see is a priority of ours is we want to continue to brand and we want to continue to bring great pride into our facilities, not only for our kids and our parents, but also for our community. You'll see new signage, you'll see, you know, our, our Merton logos all over the place, whether it's soap dispensers or where you walk in. We want our kids to feel really, really proud in the place that they call home for eight hours a day almost throughout the school year. Talk about energy-saving projects, I mean, what you're seeing right now, we replaced an entire seventy-five section, every, like fixture, into LEDs and D-lamps at the same time. So we're very fortunate about being able to do that. Technology continues to be a big emphasis too. We want something that's bigger and faster at a very, very reasonable rate. So we use, we've got a great tech team, we've got some great knowledge across our school board who brings a ton of different experiences and backgrounds that allow us to really leverage what's out there, not only in the area of learning, but also in the area of networking and infrastructure to allow us to do a lot of the things that we want to do. So, these new technologies, we are operating with less personnel because we've got technology that's working too as well. So again, talk about energy-saving costs, we have personnel savings costs when we start talking about utilizing efficient technology. Finances, again, the third probably most important thing, and that's why we put it in priority. Like Sherry said, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in two thousand and eleven, now we're at two point eight. Now we're talking about how we spend down our fund balance and how, what's the plan? And that's really where we tie that into the facilities because fund balance is used for one-time purchases. We do not want to use fund balance as a reoccurring expense. So, the facility team, in conjunction with the finance team, are going to get together and see what we want to do with this, if we want to keep it at thirty percent or if we want to spend a little bit more down. In this year's budget, we are spending about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars down. And believe me, our facility plan, we are, we are getting it done, but we need to continue to look to the future. We're doing this with a decreased tax levy because our property values continue to increase, but we also are spending less because we have less kids. When we talk about declining enrollment, one of the key pieces there is, is why are we declining enrollment? Well, I'm just telling you, we sent a hundred and sixteen kids to Arrowhead last year and we replaced them with sixty-eight 5Kers, full-time equivalent, and what Sherry was talking about. Boy, that, you do the math, you're close to fifty kids you're down. But I'll tell you, the word is out that we're cutting that to fifteen because we're grabbing families who are moving in and you know, there's lots of places people can choose to live. They are coming to us because we've got a great reputation, we've got our own families being our chief marketers, and that is seen by having one child leave to another public school. So, we really feel strongly about what we're doing for kids, giving a great benefit not only to our taxpayers, but ultimately, also raising the level of achievement while raising fund balance, Fund Forty-One, really saving and thinking ahead to the future from a facility standpoint. Says again, utilizing district dollars to avoid the referendum. Okay? The board does not want to go to referendum now because we've set ourselves up for success. The other piece that I want to say is, is, and Sherry talked about how we continue to take a look at employee benefits. We know the market, we know what happens outside of the public sector. We continue to adapt because we have to, to meet our fiscal needs. If we want to put as much money as we can in front of our kids and if we want to bring support to our teachers, we need to continue to be creative and find ways to, to, to really finalize, but ultimately, you saw sixty-six percent of our, of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. So that's where we look to try to maximize those benefits while still retaining a very, very high-quality workforce. Because that's, that's a really, really big priority. And when we start talking about that workforce engagement and development, this is, boy, I, I don't even know how many years in the world, we have not lost another teacher to another school district. That was our, that was not our choice. So, you hear about teachers bums and, which they're our free agents, which is great. We are keeping our staff. And we like to think because, A, it's a great place to work, which it is, it's a wonderful place to work, but ultimately, they're being treated fairly and they're being treated that would be market value. Because we, we are treating them very, very fairly. We've got a lot of school districts talking to us, what are you guys doing with your, your, your retirement? How are you paying as you go? What's that four oh three B matching program that you guys have? That's another way that we continue to really be creative with employee retention, but also employee morale, and then ultimately, keeping that high-quality workforce. And that's not just for teachers, we really want support staff as well to feel valued as well. Teaching and learning is the most important thing, which is, the center of this is the teacher. How do we get our teachers better? This past year, we added a math specialist, thank you, school board. So that means now we have mandatory coaching in three out of the four core areas. Mandatory coaching for every literacy teacher, mandatory coaching for every math teacher, mandatory coaching for every science teacher. We don't wait for teachers to say, I think I need help. Nope, we come in, you're on a cycle and you are coached several times throughout the year as we take a look at those key areas.
Who does, who does the training of science? Mary?
Mary, Mary does that, yep. We coach in with Mary, correct. Yep, she would do that. And then we have a technology specialist as we're moving forward to as well. So, ongoing professional development, we also have great resources in our own school district, in our own staff. We have what's called Mustang University, which is basically, we, we allot one contractual day that our staff are required throughout the year to take what we call Mustang University course. This year, we have courses that are being offered by our own staff in the area of writing comp, writing strategies, reading comprehension, special education, inclusionary practices. We've got language. We've got language, uh, early language development. Uh, we've got some, some book studies around collaborative environments, lost at school. Really trying to get things continuing to move forward, given the interest of our staff. They are required to do one, we have about sixty percent of our staff that have chosen to do more than one. So they are engaged in their own learning. It was interesting, at the beginning of the year, we, we had Jim Rickaby, former superintendent, he's founder of a personalized learning network. And he said something very profound. He says, we didn't hire teachers or we don't hire people for what they know now. We hire them for what they can learn in the future. And how they can learn, how they can adapt to their environments. And that's truly what we try to do with our workforce, is we prepare them for that changing learner. We want personalized and the, the school district has given us the resources to have eighteen kids in a class. To have twenty students in a middle school literacy class, unheard of. So thank you, that's really allowed us to really do some, some, some things. Uh, we still continue, obviously, the collaboration as well as professional conferences and learning by our staff, we, we highlighted some of those things too as well. So as we think ahead to seventeen, eighteen. Okay, this year, we continue to focus on the work that we've been doing, which is basically creating very dynamic collaborative teams. With a high level of culture and climate in each of our buildings. Uh, we continue to be data-driven, we are looking and diving deep, we've got specialists. But ultimately, we have teams that are looking at not only grade level data, but individual data too as well. About what students need as that, on needed, as an as-needed basis and very intentional. Social studies, this is our implementation year. We've got brand new five K through eighth grade, very dynamic, very exciting stuff that we're going to be bringing in the area of social studies. We've got National Geographic, we've got Discovery Education. Um, we've got some really new, really cool things from the Wisconsin Historical Society for fourth grade. So we're very excited about what that's going to bring. Our two main areas of development this year, which our student achievement committee is going to be very active in. And that's going to be focused around digital literacy skills. I'm not talking about literacy in the traditional way. I'm talking about digital skills, digital literacy, which means how, what skills or standards or objectives? Do we want our students to be able to achieve in the area of technology usage? What do we expect a five K are able to do? In the area of technology. First grade, second grade, third grade, creating standards around digital literacy, about what we want that to look like. Uh, Jim Benny, our director of technology, our district technology coordinator, as well as Mary Awansky, our science and technology specialist, will be leading that charge. Um, the big core this year is mathematics. We're going to be spending this year reviewing our math curriculum. What's working, what's not working, we currently use everyday math. And in grades five K through six, we're going to review and see if that's, if that's still what we want to do. There's a tremendous amount of movement, a lot of new curriculums out there for mathematics that we're going to take a look at from a five K through eighth grade perspective. Okay, we still have this idea for algebra for all. By the time they leave, they should be ready and we want them ready for geometry as they enter into their freshman year. That is a standard, that is our standard that we still hold high. A lot of things, uh, Martika Kenny, uh, Hazelwood, I'm sorry, is going to be our leader in that area too as well, as well as myself. Uh, really working on that part. Um, as a school board, as a community, we are going to begin strategic planning. Okay, last Friday, I sent an invitation out to our staff, sent an invitation out to our community. Uh, reached out to some specific stakeholders as well. Looking for people to begin working together on creating a district strategic plan to help guide us moving forward. We've got facility plan, we've got a finance plan, we've got a curriculum plan, we've got an instruction. Now we're going to be putting it all together, we're looking at our mission statement, our vision, values and goals. Looking at that and really bringing that to life and see what we want to do. Community outreach, okay, we're going to be reaching out to our community, seeing if we want to continue to offer community education courses. I've got about five staff members already who want to offer some sort of expertise in the, to, to our community. Uh, we'll be reaching out to our community, seeing if they have expertises that they'd like to bring. So really trying to open up our facilities for not only K eight education, but that. What do we call it? K, K hundred education? Um, as, as, everybody wants to keep learning, K hundred.
You better ask me to share something while you're already open this.
Trade, trademark, yeah. Um, the other piece is, is we are going to be creating a community newsletter this year too as well. Uh, and really trying to reach, uh, the eighty percent of our parents. Who do not have a child in our school district. Okay, we're about twenty percent. When we take a look at our, our, our parents to taxpayers and that's where that comes from there. So challenges, declining enrollment, that is going to be a challenge. We see a lot more building going on. But what we can do to fight that is, is just keep, keep producing results.
Can I just ask for a community newsletter? How are you going to do that?
We're going to do it in-house. I'll be doing that, I'll oversee that.
Mailers to everyone?
Yeah, I, I think so, yeah, I think we're going to, we're going to put it in the mailers, third class. Uh, Leah Johnson, who has done this for universities and other organizations, has volunteered to put it all together for us. And we're just going to get her the information and, and put it together from there too as well, so. Uh, we're probably looking at it twice a year, looking at it twice a year. Yep, um, declining enrollment. It's just a, a fact that what probably ninety-five percent of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin are, are battling. But how are we, how are we fighting that? We are fiscally responsible, looking ahead. We've got fund balance, we've got fund forty-one, we've got fund forty-six. A lot of those things to help us with that financial, uh, burden that comes with declining enrollment. Increased needs of our students, community, families. We continue to get a very diverse partner from multiple levels. Um, we're getting bounced around, obviously, the, the state budget was supposed to be done, oh, hopefully about a couple of months ago. The other budget expired on the thirtieth, so the best we can do is, yes, we try to keep up. Um, like Amy mentioned too, there's a lot of talk about either school formulas, school funding. Um, who knows, we try to keep up with all of it. The federal part, we get very, very little federal funds. So if you hear federal government cut the title funds or whatever, we're not going to be impacted much at all. Now, other school districts get a lot more. And that's really tied to our demographic and our free junior youth population. Um, college and career readiness, it is not just for the kids who think they can go to Madison. This is for all kids, all abilities, we need to get them ready for college and career. And then we've got our debt falling off. That's a challenge because now the levies get a drop like a rock. It's a challenge because what happens in the future, if you want to go to referendum, the levy's going to have to go up. So it's an opportunity, but also a challenge. So that's why we continue to think ahead, uh, from that standpoint too. Ultimately, what we try to do in the center of every conversation we have is how do we use district resources? And that is human resources, that is fiscal resources, that is community resources, state resources to improve teaching and learning. That is our mission. That is what we do. And we use everything that the state, the community, feds, whoever it is, give to us. And we feel we're doing a really, really good job of creating out some great results. And some things that our staff are very proud of, but our parents should be very, very proud of as well as our community as well. We're preparing students for a world that we don't know, four Ks in class of twenty twenty-eight, yikes. Jobs that don't currently exist, technology adaptations and innovations. Preparing our instructions for increased engagement and personalized learning to raise achievement. Whether we like it or not, we are still judged by how many students are proficient on one moment in time on the state forward exam. That's why we try to communicate some of those other growth indicators. Sixty-five, seventy percent of our kids are meeting their growth indicator, the ACT indicators, those F and P indicators. We continue to tell our story to get that out because the story where people look for is forward scores. And so we try to tell our story. Questions?
Can you talk a little bit more, more about the community outreach and?
Sure, sure. What we're, what we're trying to do is, is, is create a, almost like a, a program. For, for people who might be interested in other aspects. So for instance, Leah Johnson wants to have a pottery class. Okay, so we've got a pottery class that's going to meet on January twenty-sixth, February eighth, whatever it might be, trying to create some educational opportunities. Uh, we've got some staff who are interested in, uh, in technology. You know, either it would be social media or we've got this Google expedition thing, we just took a field trip to the nine eleven memorial. In seventh and eighth grade with Google expeditions. That was really, really cool and really powerful on nine eleven. So trying to create opportunities, I've got a professional hunter who says, Ron, you know, I, I think I could offer some courses, great. Let's see if it works out with your schedule. So trying to just offer, using some of the expertise in our area, whether it be art, creativity, uh, sciences, whatever it might be. To really start to kind of just develop a community education program. From that standpoint, so that would be the information that we probably tried to include in our first newsletter, say, hey, we're going to try something a little different. And we're going to be offering some community education programs, no different than you would see at a university. Say, hey, we're going to open up our doors and somebody want to come and learn how to throw, throw, throw on the pottery.
And then, uh, you had one student that left the school district, does that include charter school and homeschooling or?
That to public school, correct. We did lose, uh, one other student to a private school. Um, we've lost kids to move outs as well. But, um, when we take a look at what we could offer compared to other schools, we, we really compare to public schools. A charter school would be considered a public school too as well, we would consider that in there. But, uh, the number one, people left for either private, but most of them left because they moved out of the district.
The greatest percentage of that, was it four point eight percent?
It was, yeah.
Open enrollment, our kids had never walked in our door ever?
No, we lost twelve kids to open enrollment this year, one of them was a current attending. The other, uh, we lost three four Kers who never walked in. And then that would leave us with eight students who moved into our district and wanted to stay at their current district. Moved in from Swallow, wanted to stay at Swallow. Moved in from Waukesha, wanted to stay in Waukesha. That's where they are, but to Dean's point, they've never been in our building. And that's really what we look at is, is the kids and the control, I mean, you want as much control as we have, we don't have any. But we want to be able to take the families who are here with us on a day in, day out basis. Love their kids up so much that they don't want to leave. And we've been able to do that. Back in two thousand and eleven, we had over a hundred kids leave.
What's our retention rate with open enrollment students?
With open enrollment students, um, this past year, we lost two. And that's because they went back to their homeschool district or their home district. Because they were starting to get active in extracurricular activities. And, uh, you know, the family was like, hey, it was nothing you guys did wrong. So we are able to keep our open enrollments, yes. The two left, they just, and we called those, I called all those folks. The, the one individual, I called, I emailed, I talked to him at Culvers, I talked to him at Pick 'n Save, and he still called me. And that's a true story. Yeah, Amy.
Just to offer a different perspective, we opened enrolled into the district this year. I have a sixth grader and a seventh grader, so to make that decision at that point in their education was a big move for us. Um, and I guess just huge kudos to Ron, my husband was not on board necessarily. And it was Ron's responsiveness and his willingness to me, we were, made the decision late in August to do this. And so we had a short timeframe and he was willing to meet with us, answered our questions. And that really flipped my husband because he felt like if this is what they're doing for us, you know, this is the kind of place we want our kids. And I have to say, the staff has been phenomenal. Um, kudos to the board for the person we hired to run it and the staff he has here. Uh, they've made this an easy transition and have been great at helping our kids get on board. Um, so just really, you guys have done phenomenal things, you should be very proud of the district and the people that we have in.
And, and I don't want to highlight one of your children, but we do have, when we talk about personalized learning. Her son has a personalized, has a personalized plan.
Our math curriculum is different than your math curriculum and he kind of got caught in between where he. Should be in this curriculum, but didn't have everything the year before. And you have two math teachers who have created a personalized plan, who are meeting with him in his study halls to compact the information. Didn't learn so that he can stay on track where he should be. Um, which, and they came to us with that and said, hey, look, this is what we want to do for you and for him. And that, and had we not been sold prior to that, that would have sealed the deal right there.
And that's our staff's prep time during that study, so, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
I just have a question about, you were talking about the number of assessments that the kids are, you know, subjected to and then the forward exam. Um, academically, obviously, you're working very hard to prepare them for those, are you preparing them as well self-esteem and assertiveness wise?
We are, we are really doing our very, very best and, and this past year was a very big emphasis on the forward, not going to lie to you. Because we, we were not happy, when I say we, oh, there's a collective we behind me, when I say our staff was disappointed as well. Uh, because we expected more out of our kids than what we, we were giving and what they were showing us. So, um, but we also heard that, you know, test anxiety, boy, is there too much pressure? Because when you spend two weeks of test prep. To really get them pumped up and, and, and engage in that, some kids are just like, oh my goodness. So we do take that into, into account and this year, we are going to, we've learned from that and say, how can we tweak that? To make it a little bit more social emotional component to them too as well. Um. So there, there, there is that fine line of student expectation and with what we, what we can try to get out of them. Um, I can tell you with the emphasis we've, we've placed on growth, whether it be in the math or the F and P and, and the forward. Our scores have never been like this before. So we know our kids have risen to the occasion, we like to think about that the, the level of instruction from our staff is not just. Oh boy, let's focus on it for two weeks, but how do we maintain that level of high quality instruction and that high quality engagement of the kids? So that when they show up to a test, they're like, yeah, I can do this. So you do have that high level of confidence. So we're going to do some things, we're going to front load a lot more this year. And that way, that'll allow us to do a less emphasis on it as we lead up into the spring with that forward exam too. So, um, it is a big conversation, especially with our staff, because we don't want kids feeling overwhelmed. We don't want this burden on them saying, oh, I have to meet my math goal or I have to be, no, we want them to do the best they can. And we've just found that the best that they can do is pretty darn good and we just got to be able to get them. But we also need them ready for that one moment in time, unfortunately, because that is, that's how we're judged. And, um, we have this conversation with our staff, it's like, boy, we assess this, we assess that. Um, but we also are in an age of accountability. And that is not brought in by, by Ron or the school board, that is not only the society, that is the state, that is the federal government saying we have to raise our achievement up. In comparison to the other industrial nations, so. But the child still is at the center and we'll be making, making some significant changes. More front loading instead of just this heavy emphasis two weeks before the test. Now, we are going to do that because we saw results, but ultimately building up that confidence throughout here.
Was that the one last year or we had so many people left out?
Yes, we had that too. Nope, we've got that under, but they actually changed it where those students don't affect your score.
Oh, okay. Do you have any?
This past year was significantly less, significantly less. Because the words coming out of Madison was not, it was a junk exam. The state was behind it, in essence, the governor was behind the state forward exam. And there was a, this, this feeling and this comfortability that it was going to be here for a while. So this past year was the first time in three years, no one's talked about changing an assessment. So when we think about that learning target, we still don't get a lot of information. They should be giving us more information than what they do, that's a whole other story. But the small information that we have, we're starting to really start to get those darts hit that target. And that's really what we're trying to do with our data and data.
Well, it should make sense that those who have doubts should not be counted.
Well, that, there's a lot of things that should make sense, so we'll just move on from that comment. So, but that was really pulling us down was is, you know, when you have three or four percent. Boom, that's a big difference when you take a look at a ranking where compared to the other local, let's say feeder schools where they're like, well, we had maybe one or two kids. It wasn't as big as it was here, so. Thank you, thanks everybody. Okay, we're on to the next item of business, salaries of the school board members. We've been getting eight hundred and fifty dollars here for quite a few years. I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the school board salaries at eight hundred and fifty dollars per year.
One second, I would say we should raise them a lot because you guys do such a great job, but you know. The mindset of the board is to save money, you're happy with the eight fifty. So, I'll send you the.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, because I'm going to open up, I'm like a railroad this one, I'm going to open this up for discussion if there's any discussion. Amy knows what I'm talking about. So.
No, I think you're worth every dollar.
There's no discussion, all of them say aye? There's no discussion, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion's carried, 850. Okay, we have the adoption of the tax levy.
I'll make a motion to adopt a tax levy. I'll second.
Do we need to have that?
Let's read the, let's read the numbers, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual tax levy of $4,274,710 for the general fund, $0 non-referendum debt service fund 38, $338,540 for referendum debt service fund 39, $200,000 capital expansion fund 41, and $0 for community service fund 80, for a total levy of $4,813,250.
One second. Is there any comments, concerns, questions? And all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion's carried. Okay, we are, next item is establishing date and time for 2018 annual meeting.
Would you like to have Tuesday night again? The corresponding Tuesday, like we've done in the past? That would be September 11th.
Do we want to make it seven?
Yeah, I think we should do seven o'clock. I think we should look at the seven o'clock. But the corresponding date with the last several would be a Tuesday in September, basically the second Tuesday after school starts is kind of when things got settled in. So, September 11th at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, then the new business, we have the authorization to sell disposable unusable materials.
We do not have any to present at this time.
Okay, the Fund 73 report.
Which was essentially what I had on the board of the budget presentation and just was showing that we are spending down the fund over the next couple of years.
And we'll be spending approximately $10,660 in Fund 73 this year.
Okay, the next item, are you ready? Ready to read the minutes from tonight and be approved?
Yes, okay. The annual meeting and, I'm sorry, I do need one name. Election of Dean as the president, as the chairman was Amy made the motion and said, who made the second? The annual meeting and budget hearing were called to order by Dean Doberton at 7:30 PM. Motion by Amy Hammer, second by Phil Spindler, to it by Dean Doberton as chairperson. Motion carried unanimously. Dean Doberton called the budget hearing to order. Dean Doberton called the annual meeting to order at 8:01 PM. Motion by Randy Ewing, second by Phil Spindler, to dispense the reading of the annual meeting minutes of Tuesday, September 13th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. Motion carried unanimously. Motion by Ron Russ, second by Amy Hammer, to retain the school board member's salaries at the current rate of $850 per year. Motion carried unanimously. Motion by Amy Hammer, second by Randy Ewing, to approve the annual levy being established at $4,274,710, general fund, Fund 10, $0 non-referendum debt service fund 38, $338,540 referendum debt service fund 39, $200,000 capital expansion fund 41, $0 community service fund 80, for a total levy of $4,813,250. Motion carried unanimously. By consensus of the citizens, the 2018 annual school board meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on September 11th, 2018. Motion carried unanimously. There was no motion for disposal of usable materials and/or equipment.
Okay, motion to accept that as presented? Motion accepted as presented? Second, the second, additions, corrections? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion's carried. entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion's carried.